Pierce. Trustee Pierce, are you here?
He is moving over.
Have we moved over?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Pierce. Trustee Ayers Wilson, are you present?
I'm here, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Ayers Wilson. Trustee Kane.
I'm here.
Trustee Stoma. Trustee Maria.
Right over here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee vote.
Yeah.
And myself. Thank you. Just to remind everybody, especially those joining us virtually members, make sure your camera is on and that we are able to see you, sure and count you present. Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Dr. Head. Has a proper meeting notice been properly posted and certified?
Yes, I certified the, the meeting was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. We don't have closed session. Next item in order is public comment. Desiree, do we have anyone for public comment?
Madam Chair, we have one commenter, Dr. John Bergdoff, and he is presenting in person today.
Thank you.
Link, if you will, drive the presentation for Dr. Bergdoff, please.
Good evening. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of AFT Lone Star College. Once every year or two, our local of the American Federation of Teachers conducts a poll of Lone Star employees to determine what issues are of greatest concern to faculty and staff. Our latest poll ran from early October through early November and garnered the highest number of responses we have ever had to one of our surveys. Over 1,100 faculty, staff, and administrators filled out the form. Because of time limitations, I'll split up my report on the results over a couple of months. Tonight, I want to focus on questions we asked related to working safely and productively as the COVID pandemic continues on. May I have the next slide, please? Thank you. Our first question to employees was very broad. Do you feel that your current working conditions are conducive to you feeling and doing your best? The answers to this question are very encouraging, with over 80% of employees indicating that they are either mostly or absolutely feel that their working conditions are positive, even though we are in the midst of so many challenges. This is hopeful news to build on as we bring more students and employees back to campus. The remaining questions relate specifically to COVID safety on campus. May I have the next slide, please? We know that Governor Abbott has banned mask mandates by public employers, although a number of ISDs and two community college systems, Austin and Dallas, have decided to require masks anyway. We wanted to know what employees would think about having mandatory mask requirements here at Lone Star. In this slide, the first pair of bars relates to mandatory masks for employees, and the second pair relates to masks for students. Blue bars represent yes, and gold bars represent no. As you can see, yes responses outnumber no responses by over 20 percentage points. A solid majority of employees would support mandatory masking should the college find itself in the position of implementing such a mandate. May I have the next slide, please? Given discussions of vaccine mandates at the national level, we asked whether employees would support masking back, making vaccine, excuse me, making vaccines mandatory, except in cases of documented health-related problems. Again, a significant majority said yes, although the gap between yes and no was slightly narrower. May I have the next slide, please? Besides masks and vaccines, we asked employees to indicate their support for a variety of other safety measures. There were a number of options, and employees could pick all that they agreed with. The measure with the greatest support was nightly cleaning of the buildings. Also receiving significant support were reinstating contact tracing, enforcing social distancing, and temperature checks. It should be noted that none of these measures garnered as much support as masks and vaccines. In conducting surveys like this one, the AFT is looking for ways we can engage employees to work together to solve identified issues. In this case, although employee support for mask and vaccine mandates is quite strong, we realize that the political winds are against these measures here in Texas. Also, from looking at comments employees posted, those who oppose these mandates, although in a minority, tend to be very passionate. We were thinking, can we reframe the discussion about masks and vaccines away from whether one's own personal rights are being violated and towards voluntarily stepping up to protect other people? To that end, we are in the process of building a campaign to implement with the start of spring semester. May I have the last slide, please? Our plan is to promote a pledge that faculty, staff, and students can voluntarily choose to take to protect each other. We are asking the Lone Star community to pledge to wear masks, get vaccinated, wash hands, maintain social distancing, and stay home when sick. We are planning giveaways, prizes, and activities to help employees and students get excited about the pledge. Our hope is to make COVID safety the cool thing to do at Lone Star as we return to face-to-face learning. We have lots of details to work out. This is our tentative logo. As details come together, we can share more. Watch for AFT on campus in the spring as we say, "Let's Stop COVID, LSC." Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I love your logo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Desiree, for?
No, Madam Chair, we have no others.
Okay. So what just, we want to make sure and know that Trustee Ayers Wilson has joined us. Ma'am, are you still there? I think I saw her just a couple of seconds ago. I just want to make sure if she's there. I would do, make sure and count her present. Anyways, let's, let's move to the next item, which is the workshop. I think we'll have a presentation, Mrs. Nicole Robinson.
Board, I ask Nicole Robinson Gaudier to come in, give us an update on the foundation, which you don't hear a lot about, but how long have you worked here? Five years. I think maybe when you started, we had 21, 22?
23 million.
23 million. And she's going to tell you, but we've got 40 million in the foundation endowment right now. She's done a phenomenal job, so I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update today. As you can hear, it's a good one. I have had the pleasure of being the Executive Director of Lone Star College Foundation for just over five years now, and what an honor. But as Dr. Head said, let's start with a little history, a little history lesson to start. So we're celebrating our 30th anniversary, and the college helped get this organization started with a gift of $20,000 back in 1991. And as you've heard, today, we've reached a milestone just last month of having more than $40 million in assets. Over the last 30 years, we've had the ability to give away more than $16.5 million in scholarships to more than 18,000 students, plus more than $8 million in program and emergency support. And as you know, the foundation is the nonprofit arm of the college, and we're governed by a 21-member Board of Directors. Just recently, Danny Wilson of Kingwood was elected as our new board chair. And as Chair of the Board of Trustees, Trustee Saldivar has an automatic seat as an ex officio member on our board, as we always want your representation there. So we are grateful for that. So thank you for joining us. And as you can see, we've been busy over the last academic year, awarding more than $1.5 million in scholarships, plus more than 700 in program support to the college. And we know that our student-
I was trying to answer the chair, but it wouldn't.
Perfect. Trustee Wilson, we, it's noted you're present. Thank you so much, ma'am. Sorry, Nicole.
No worries. That's okay. In emergency funding, we know that our students have all sorts of needs, and so we were able to help more than 300 students, some of them with general emergencies and some of them with books, just to get through the semester. What is not included in the emergency funding is half a million dollars that went to more than 3,300 students during the winter storm. That was an, we seem to have often unprecedented events, but the foundation has been really blessed to be able to support students in those occasions. And this is one of those occasions. That photo is one of our respiratory therapy students. So she received a computer during the height of COVID, and that helped her. And it was through one of the foundation-sponsored programs, it helped her stay in class and get closer to completing her program this fall. Here's a little bit about our income, more than $4 million in private donations to the foundation in the past year, and almost $6 million in investment earnings. The market has been good to a lot of us, so we are grateful for that. The endowments have topped $20 million for the first time. And when the 72 planned endowments are fulfilled in the next few years, Lone Star College Foundation will have well over 500 named endowments in support of students and programs at the college. I'd like to mention at the bottom, you can see that these are unapproved audited financials, so those finance, those audit, that audit will go to the Foundation Board of Directors next week, and then will be shared with the college as a part, as a part of the college's audit. I would like to add that we have a clean audit and an unmodified opinion that we work really hard on to maintain year after year. But what I also want to tell you is this is one of my favorite photos. This is Janelle. Janelle is a foundation scholarship recipient, now a graduate of Lone Star College. And when she came to us for this little photo shoot, we said, "Janelle, show us what it feels like to be the first person in your family to go to college." And this is what she did. And I think it's perfect. I think it speaks for itself in that case. So the foundation has many, many great community partners in all areas of the college's service area, but I only selected two to share with you right now. The first one is the Tomball Regional Health Foundation. They recently had a milestone of their own, topping $2 million in support of Lone Star College Foundation and the programs that we serve. They support health occupations and health programs and have given, have given quite a boost to the students at Lone Star College Tomball. They're zip code restricted in their donation, so they have to support the Tomball area. They have a generous, community-minded Board of Directors, and their CEO, Lynn LaBeauf, also serves as the Vice Chair for the Foundation's Board of Directors. So a big thank you to Tomball Regional Health Foundation for their support and their milestone. This second project is a brand-new one, and it is a national partnership. I'm thrilled to tell you that we are one of 10 community colleges in the country selected by Johnson Controls to partner with them on their community college program. The foundation worked with Lone Star College's grants team to secure a $100,000 grant for scholarships. And this is at North Harris and the East Aldine Center for HVAC and refrigeration technology and electrical technology. And for Johnson Controls, it's more than just writing a really big check every year, because we're planning on renewing this for a few more years if we're, continue to be eligible. They've already hosted a lunch and learn on campus about safety and craftsmanship, and they plan to host a scholarship reception in the spring so they can meet these students. And you better believe we're going to make sure that those students have updated resumes, because we know with Lone Star College's training, they're going to be great hires. But when you think of the foundation, I know a lot of people think of the golf tournament and Star Gala, because we talk about that a lot. Those are the premier fundraising events for the foundation in support of the college. These two are estimated to raise this year in person more than half a million dollars between the two of them. So more than 240 golfers are scheduled to join us on Monday for our Drive for Scholarships golf tournament. And save the date, we're coming back in person for Star Gala, at least that's the plan right now, on April 9th of 2022. So we hope you will join us. But all of our work wouldn't mean anything, and we wouldn't do it if we didn't have the trust of our donors. And since the foundation is entrusted to manage large sums of funding, we continue to work hard to maintain high standards of excellence, and these are two more examples in addition to a clean audit. You can see that we got the gold seal of transparency from GuideStar. And I know you probably can't read the, all the standards, but those are a lot of checkboxes that we reach with the Better Business Bureau as one of their accredited nonprofits.
Call board, if you can't see that little box there, you can see it behind you up here.
Right behind you on the big screen is a nice list of 20 standards that we met. And I'd be happy to share those with you. I apologize, you couldn't see them on the smaller screens. But these are just a few of the ways that we help to maintain donor confidence and donor trust. But everything we do is in support of the college to benefit students. And here's a great example of a scholarship recipient's appreciation in his own words. And while you're reading that, I'll share with you the part of the quote that stands out the most to me. "Receiving this award is the affirmation to myself that I am taking the right path for my career." You see, what we find is that scholarships are rarely just financial aid to these students. More often than not, they're the vote of confidence that these students need to keep going and to complete. And every single day, it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to do this for these students and with your support. So if you're interested in supporting the foundation or have any questions, I'd be more than happy to assist. Thank you for the opportunity and for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. I think Trustee Sullivan had a question for you.
Yeah, thank you. Nicole, great presentations always. Thanks to you and your board for what y'all do and how you support our students and our program. So I wanted to ask you as a follow-up, if you could send me an update on the progress made on Linda Good's desire that we have a trustee-endowed scholarship fund and how short we might be to achieve that.
I was prepared for that one.
Okay.
You are, this, the Board of Trustees' endowment is less than $3,000 away from being minimally funded. I think it's just over 2,800 is what it needs to be minimally funded.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And one more comment, if I may, Chair, people that don't know about GuideStar, Nicole will appreciate this. Nicole, GuideStar is my go-to resource when I receive philanthropic requests to group one automotive. I go straight to them. I look at their rating, I check the Form 990, and then I make my recommendation. So good, good resource to have. Thank you.
Thank you. You're not alone. That's why we wanted to make sure that we were well represented there.
Any other questions, members? Nicole, just thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for what you are doing for the foundation, for the college and students. And thank you to the board members as well. Thank you so much.
I will share that. Thank you.
So just to make sure, members and guests, we're going to put the redistricting presentation at the end before the future agenda items, so that folks who are visiting us today or watching online are able to close off or leave early, if you would like. We don't want to keep you here longer than what you would like to, so, but you're more than welcome to stay here as well. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. And I know that we have a couple of edits to it. Is that correct, Dr. Head?
Yes, on page 10, we had a couple of edits. In one place, we gave Trustee Sullivan inadvertently a PhD, so that should be Mr. Sullivan. And secondly, we changed chairs. It says Chair Smith, but that should say Chair Saldivar. So we're making the recommendation to approve the minutes with those changes.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve those?
Some of. Second, Sullivan.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please vote with the usual eye.
Eye.
All those opposed? Trustee Pierce, can you please make sure and turn on the camera? We want to make sure that your vote is counted. Thank you, ma'am.
Eye.
Perfect. All those against? Item passes. Thank you. Now to special reports and announcements.
So I have a couple of updates for the board. One, you received a note about accreditation visit. I cannot tell you how important that accreditation visit for us was, and I want to thank Dr. Dwight Smith and Valerie Jones for leading that. We had several hundred people involved in that project. And it, I cannot tell you how unusual it is that a college our size receives no comments or no recommendations. And no recommendations means they couldn't really find anything. So they had some suggestions over things that we might improve, but no, no recommendations, which is very unusual, by the way, with SAC. That was a multi-year effort and what, so we do that every 10 years. We try to prepare for it all the time. It wasn't just preparation for that meeting. It's just what we do. It's the, is part of a, we belong to that accreditation agency, and I don't know, there's six or seven of them, I think, across the country. We're part of the Southern Association, but a lot of work went into that. I was very proud of that, because it's an affirmation of, I think that we adhere to the guidelines that community colleges establish, and they were extremely complimentary about what we do. So I was pleased with that. On the COVID front, and I talked to John Bergdoff before the meeting, so I'd sent out a note yesterday, and I want to repeat some of the things he said, but so we had the staff started back on November the 4th, and we had the latest report that went out for the first week in November. And we're on track pretty much to, for the numbers look like they did in April of 2020, April of 2020. So we're really moving in the right direction, and I think that we'll continue what we've been doing, and, you know, we were encouraging vaccinations. We're encouraging masks, but as John pointed out, the state and the executive order from the governor prohibits us from requiring that. So, so the issue at the federal level, though, and this is where it gets pretty interesting. I was in Washington last week for meetings, and some of the, were the federal mandates that came down from OSHA. And, you know, that that's being litigated, to say the least, and doesn't apply to us right now. We were specifically told that, that, that order from OSHA does not apply to us. And I sent the board a note over this. I think we've shared this with the employees, but the issue with this is the administration is trying to figure out ways that if you receive federal funding, then you should fall under the mandate and for vaccinations and probably masks. It's vaccinations that were the issue. So I don't know, we'd left Washington, they said they have a long way to go over that. But we received over half a billion dollars a year in some kind of federal assistance, either through stimulus money or federal aid or a number of grants that we received. So we'll see. I don't, I mean, you're seeing the litigation and some of the opposition to it. So our, our policy right now is to encourage vaccinations and mandates, but not mandates, masks, sorry. We, vaccinations and masks, but we're not requiring it, and we're not, we're not leaning on anybody to do one way or another. I mean, that's your, kind of your personal choice. So, so that's where we are with that. I'll let the board know, and the employees know if we hear anything any different, but that's, that's going to be settled in the courts, I believe. So, and it also runs contrary to what we're doing at the state, and I'll let somebody else figure that one out, so. I want to, we had a, we hosted a business summit here last Friday. We had 200 people from the Woodlands area here to talk about where we are with business. That's really, we hosted it in this room, in the room next door. So we're getting back to normal slowly but surely. The, for the board, don't forget that we've got a, there's a higher ed summit or conference in Austin. For some of you have said that you wanted to go, you either, there's mandatory training. You don't have to go to that meeting, but you have to do the training online, one way or go to the meeting. So if you think you want to go, you need to let Desiree know, so that we can make sure we get the reservations. And it's two days, it's December, the, it's on that Thursday and Friday of that week. And next week, we have the, we have the first meeting of the Finance Committee to review community college finances, the, the one that I was just appointed to. I cannot, I cannot tell you how important this is for the, for the, really the future of Lone Star and really what we do financially, because what they're trying to decide is how to help the small colleges in the state. And so there's only so much money to go around, and the way they look at it right now, so how do the large colleges fit in to that model and how do the small colleges fit in? And I'll give you, I'll give you updates at each meeting over that, but so the meetings start next week, and I think there's going to be a couple of meetings in December for this. But this is going to go on for about a year before recommendations are made to the legislature. I'm really, really interested in this, because it impacts us. It does over the long term, over how we handle our own finances. And let's see here, do we want to talk about, you're going to talk about the board? Just let me get, okay, so that's, that's all I have. The, I just wanted to, we have faculty senate, we asked the faculty senate, because we have redistricting. That's a lengthy conversation, so we asked the faculty senate if they would delay their next presentation until December, and they agreed to do that. So I'll, to that end it for us.
Okay, so members, before I share my report with everyone, do you have any, any reports to share with us?
Trustee Sullivan, if I, or Mike Sullivan, if I may.
Yes, please.
Yeah, might be just a little late on this, and I apologize if I am, but we had a transition at Lone Star from one email system to another, or online system to another online system. Not, I'm not sure which, and as good as Link's directions were for trustees on how to do it, I wasn't able to do it myself. So he sent me over to the Lone Star College Kingwood location to their help desk. And I just want to compliment the employees there who not only programmed my iPad, but programmed my MacBook Air and my iPhone, and had me reboot to make sure it took, and the guys were just great, and really wanted to thank them for that. Then second, I wanted to make note of, pardon me, the increased advertising I'm seeing. All of my online searches, almost continually, a Lone Star logo with a message will jump on. And I noticed that when I'm in Austin and I'm looking at Texas Tribune online, the Lone Star message pops up on searches there as well. And of course, our billboards around town. So Steve, hats off to you and the vendor that's doing that work, as well as the internal marketing team. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just real quickly, I want to mention two, two things. First, kind of give you a little update on the candidates for the replacement of District 7 seat that is currently vacant. We do have three candidates showing interest and have applied for the precision. And so we will interview them on November 19th, starting at 9:00 AM. And so I have to be, I'm going to be present for the meeting, but we're also going to have it virtually. So for those who are able to join us in person, please do so, but if you can't, please join us virtually. And I think we will tape as well the meeting, just in case you're not able to join us. So if you have any questions, please let me know or let. If they have questions. Okay, so if you have any further questions, just make sure it let me know or Desiree or Dr. Head.
We'll send out, we'll send out the resumes again and information about the meeting time and access and all that this week, next week.
So we, so I was told that we're going to receive information regarding this particular meeting and the candidates' resumes by next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then second, And then second, trustee Mario and I, we attended, or I should say, we met with the SAC accreditation folks. And we were really thrilled that what they actually, you know, said to us on behalf of, of the Lone Star. We thought that they were going to ask us questions. We were ready for those questions, but if I may say, if I can say that, it was primarily, the whole meeting was more about how they really enjoyed interviewing you, the Lone Star and then everyone there at Lone Star. They were really taken back and surprised how everyone was very well prepared. They were knowledgeable and they couldn't say anything. So they, they said so many nice things about, about Lone Star. Trustee Maria, if you want to add anything?
Yes. Clearly, the, there was a lot of respect. You could tell right away that the, we know the importance of the accreditation of this, this review. So of course, very proud to know about the incredible, just the way they, they perceive and they acknowledge the efforts of Lone Star College. And in, and in trying to get our feedback, you know, they basically, they asked us a couple of questions about our knowledge of our process and, and so the, they followed up with commending us and how well, how other colleges see us throughout the country and how often what we do here is other colleges kind of adopt at times. So that's, that says a lot, right? When other colleges look to us. One of the things I added, just what happens, I had just come back and I want to report on that as well, on the SACC T conference. The Association of Community Colleges, the, after the COVID, we hadn't had any in-person meetings until this time and, and it's, and I mentioned in this during the review that I learned about the challenges that other, other colleges throughout the country were experiencing. And that's when you realize how well we got it, right? And some of them are, were still challenging their leadership roles. Some of them were still looking for, for presidents and, and, and we got in groups. I attended this, this workshop with trustees from different colleges and, and then you get to see what the others were facing or encountering in terms of finance, finances, in terms of technology. And I could quickly tell that, you know, we were, we were pretty much well ahead of that. And, and so I, I added that at this, in this meeting because I think it kind of spelled out, you know, it showed, illustrated just, just how, how, how much over we'll see, we're expected. And I guess in many ways, how lucky we are that through our management, through our leadership, we managed to get through it even ahead of the folks. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't easy. I could tell by the other folks. So while I'm at it, I'm, one more thing quick about the, the training. Thank you. You know, the, we get the opportunity when we're, we attend these conferences to, to engage in conversations and discussions about effective governance structures and, and effective leadership. How to monitor for accountability. How to make sure that we stay focused on the big picture. And to elaborate, to why it's so important to demonstrate mutual support for administration and our board, board members or colleagues. And same time to identify protocols for connecting with our stakeholders and so if I may, I, I don't, I don't mean to embarrass you, Aisha, but I was fortunate to, to get a chance to, to work with you and to engage in some of these discussions while we were there. But I admire her dedication, her commitment, her interest and her follow-up interest, but wanted to be involved and wanted to find out about committees and how we get, for the sake of Lone Star, I mean, it's all about our students or practically our administration, our everything. So I just wanted to sort of shout out because that's the kind of motivation and enthusiasm, I think, that we need as trustees to, to, when we go to these events to, because it's, it's important as trustees to kind of understand and to learn. Obviously, you know, we never learn everything and that's one of the lessons I've learned over, over time, but I just wanted to, to do that. Thank you so much, Aisha. Appreciate that. But that's it. Just wanted to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can move to, let's see, the consideration of the consent agenda. So there are some couple of items that we're going to consider separately. And those are items five, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. With items nine to 13 would be considered at once. That's, I think we can do that. Yes. Board members, do we have any other items that you would like to consider separately aside from those? All right, hearing none. So may I have a motion in a second to consider items one, two, three, four, six, seven, and 15? Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Perfect. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please vote with the usual eye.
Eye.
All those opposed? Items pass. Thank you. So let's go to item number five. I have a motion in a second for item.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Chairman, this is trustee Pierce and, you know, during my background work and looking at the company that you're asking more to approve, I just have an issue with the diversity of this company. So that, that's my issue here. There's a lack of diversity.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
You want?
Done, done. That's, that was my comment. That's why I hit it cool.
Thank you, trustee Pierce.
I.
Jennifer, do we have any?
I think it's worth noting that the representative from RBC is African-American, it's Clarence Greer, who's been at a couple of our meetings. So Jennifer, do you want to tell how we do the points on that or how that, at the company?
Sure. For all of our solicitations, there's the various criteria and ahead of time, we assign a weight to each criteria. So, and this is included for, in, in the board trustees packets, the points that for each firm that proposed, excuse me. And yes, hub participation is one of the criteria that is 5% of the total weighting. And so each firm did receive various points for that participation. But of course, the final selection is based on the sum of points across all the various criteria, which also includes price qualifications, past performance with Lone Star College and other criteria. So we apply this methodology consistently across this solicitation and others. That way, the consideration of hub participation is applied consistently.
I don't think it reflects in the, in the way the points are, but that firm is diverse. I mean, the leadership in that firm is diverse, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
This is trustee Ayers Wilson, and I know you said it, um, Dr. Head, that it doesn't really reflect, but you're right, because it only says 2.25%, which, you know what I'm saying, is the lowest on, out of all of the other, um, you know, I guess, companies, you know, competing or whatever. So we have to be mindful of that. I feel like when you're talking about a school that's diverse as Lone Star, that we make sure that our contractors are just as diverse.
Agreed.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor of item number five, please vote eye.
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 All those opposed?
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Trustee Pierce.
Okay, I was, I was reminded by Melissa that I have to do a, we have to do a roll call for this particular item. So all those in favor for item number five, let's go with trustee Mario.
Eye.
Trustee Kane.
Eye.
Trustee vote.
Eye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Eye.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
No.
Trustee Stoma. Trustee Pierce.
No.
Myself, I. Item passes. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second for item number eight?
Second.
Perfect. Any comments or questions on, on item number eight?
One of the things I, well, I have a question. These are, it's really, you know, this whole from eight through 14, asking the boards to approve modifications to prior existing contracts. And I, I understand that these have already been approved. What, why are they back at the table? That's what I want to understand. Where are we back? If these contracts have already been approved, is it because of cost overruns? You know, I'm just talking about the money that's, you know, when you get deep into that's being, it's coming from, well, anyway, you gave the source, but I'm just want to know where, probably back at the table to reapprove contracts that were already approved.
I think we'll have Jennifer kind of make a comment on that. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, if I may. So first for items nine through 14, those are not modifying existing contracts. But first regarding item eight, which is the one discussed right now, that one would add additional, is at requesting for additional funding of $25,000 for this contract with the architect and an extension of the contract period. In this case, the increase in cost is a result of the delays we saw for the Magnolia Center in getting the land for the center. We had the architect start previously and then we had to pause them to go get additional land. Once we closed on a new piece of property, we restarted them and had to modify part of the design to the new site. So yes, in the, in action item 18, we are requesting the additional amount of $25,000 and additional time on the contract. And like I said, that has been due to the delay in getting land for the Magnolia Center.
Great, thank you.
So talk about items nine through, nine through 13. You, you want me to give them?
Do you want me to do that now or if we can?
You want me to tell them what? You want to vote on eight?
Yes. Any, any further comments or questions on eight?
On, on eight is, is this $25,000 something that's recoverable in our action to get made whole on that land?
Uh, yes, it is. I will give you an update over there. We don't have that land up for sale right now.
Okay.
But that land is more valuable now than it was when we purchased it.
The, the land that we previously bought.
Right. But so, I mean, the additional cost, just to be clear, was we moved the location of the facility, which changed the design to some extent, so. But yes, we'll recover the, the cost.
I have a question. This is trustee Wilson. Where would this $25,000 be coming from exactly?
This is part of our bond projects and so in there, there are contingency funds within, it's the total of 485 million is the total amount that was approved by the voters back in 2014 for various projects. And so the Magnolia Center is a bond-funded project.
For what year was the bond done?
The bond was approved by voters in 2014. The Magnolia Center originally had been intended to be part of Phase One and completed a few years ago. However, there were challenges in getting land. And so that is why we are now at the point of getting the center designed.
Okay, and let me ask another question. I know it wasn't here, but do we, were the delays, um, like on our part or just the part of you just couldn't, you know, do anything with the land? Were we waiting on someone which caused the delay? Like, what was the delay? Like, what caused delay?
There were a few factors. In the first instance, it was a challenge in Magnolia, just with the fast pace of development in Magnolia. It was actually a challenge competing to get with others also trying to purchase land in the same area. So that took some time to identify even a suitable site. And then we did make an initial purchase and then shortly, and that's when we started design, but then shortly after making that purchase, we found out that TechStop was going to be building the bypass right through the middle of the site that we had purchased. So that was when we had to put everything on pause and kind of go back to the drawing board of finding a new site. So several factors led, led to the delays.
So there was no way to see, because I know TechStop, they normally do their stuff, um, years prior. So there was no research in seeing if any other projects with the state or whatever were, that was going to come to that area prior to purchasing this land?
The initial, the original purchase, when we were doing the due diligence, the initial map that we had received for, for it showed the bypass just to north of the site. It clipped a tiny bit of one corner, but it was to the north of the site. After we closed, there was a revised map where the bypass shifted south, just enough to now go through the middle of the site.
Okay.
The delay was not our, it was not caused by us. It was caused by the highway coming through and us having to look for additional, additional land, which we purchased just adjacent to that. So the plan over the long term is to sell the land that we bought initially or sell part of it. We'll recoup our losses over this. And actually, we don't have any losses right now, but we'll recoup the money that we spent. And we, I think we ended up with a better, actually a better location, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further comments? So hearing none, I'm going to make sure that we have to do a roll call, right? So I could just do a regular?
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of item number eight, please vote the usual eye.
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 Those opposed?
Um, this Ayers Wilson, I'm abstaining.
Trustee Pierce will abstain as well.
Okay, so we're, we're going to do a roll call. Go for item number eight. Trustee Mario.
Eye.
Trustee Kane.
Eye.
Trustee vote.
Eye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Eye.
Trustee Wilson.
Abstaining.
Trustee Stoma.
Eye.
Trustee Pierce.
Abstaining.
And myself, I. Item passes.
Chair Saldivar, question please, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Before we go to the next item, are we, are we having, this might be for legal counsel, are we having to do roll call votes because they're not approved unanimously?
Yes, that's correct. My recommendation was to take a roll call vote if it was not unanimously approved to ensure that we had the vote count correct, so we would know for sure whether the item passes.
Okay, that sounds good. Logical. I get it. Totally agree. Chair Saldivar, it's up to you. You run the voting, but if these items are pulled, why don't we just run through roll call on every pulled item real quick, rather than going through and then going back and anyway, just seems like it'd be faster and consistent.
That's, I mean, we could, we can do that as well.
You're going to say at the time, because we take a vote and then we got to go back and re-vote.
Yes, correct. Um, so now we're looking at items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
And so you, you can consider these items together if you make a friendly amendment to combine the items for discussion purposes. If there are no objections, then you can proceed with the discussion and vote on them as one block. But if there's an objection, we'll need to vote.
Would there be any objections to consider all those together? Items number nine to 14. So here, you know, objections. We can go ahead and proceed. Any, so have a motion in a second to consider those.
Motion.
Okay, perfect. Any comments or questions?
I think Jennifer was gonna go over these.
We don't have any comments from board members.
I think trustee Pierce mentioned it when we were talking about eight and then Dr. Head, um, when Jennifer came up, um, he told her just, let's get through eight and then go through nine.
To give an explanation of why they're back on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so these coming back is really just to change internally the funding source uh used towards these contracts. Uh, the request in front of the board is not to modify any of these existing contracts. The contracts have already been executed and they're master service agreements for sort of different construction-related trades. And so various projects, all many of the various projects that Lone Star College does uses these master service agreements. So what items nine through thirteen, I'll make a separate comment on fourteen, but first nine through thirteen, um, all does essentially the same thing of not modifying, modifying existing contracts, but modifying the internal funding sources that are used towards the various projects. The original board agenda items in the fiscal impact statement, uh, where it lists what the funding sources are, where we're paying for it from, originally only listed bond funds. But we have many projects that we do. There are bond-funded projects, but there's also repair and replacement projects, uh, which is out of a separate fund. We also have projects that are funded out of operational funds and some out of auxiliary funds depending on the project. So what these are doing is adding those additional funding sources. They are also not increasing the total authorized spend. So just for example, item number nine, the original total authorized spend was two million. If you look at the new fiscal impact statement and add up the separate components, it still totals the two million. So we are not increasing the total authorized spend. We are just putting it into separate funding sources and ident- identifying a separate cap for each source.
So board, um, I created this problem inadvertently because, um, we're not required by board policy or by law to come back and separate all this, but uh, something had come up in one of the other meetings. So what we're trying to do is just be transparent and let you know that you had agreed to take it out of that particular bond series and we're taking money out of different places as we normally would. When I asked Jennifer and Mario why we, while we were doing this, because I thought it was confusing myself. And I think Mario probably said, because you asked us to. So this was an attempt to be a little clearer with you about where the funding source was. And um, I agree, and the wording of it and how we went about it, it was a, not as clear as it should have been. So the money's the same. We just take it out of different pots like we do everything else, so.
The only thing I would like to add is item fourteen, it does do something similar, but that one also does ask to increase the total spending authority, whereas nine through thirteen does not increase the total spending authority. Fourteen does. That one is for uh broker, commercial brokerage services, uh, real estate services and there, uh, just the uh number of land sales and purchases that we have done since two thousand and nineteen and plan to do. The activity has increased and so the, over the five-year period, the request is to increase the spending authority. Um, and that is in addition to also still identifying additional funding sources, just like the prior items.
This is trustee Ayers Wilson. Um, for item, um, number fourteen, why, what's the increase? I mean, like, what's causing it to increase?
The increase is the number of transactions, right? So for each transaction, uh, there are commissions that we pay. So, for example, I even just mentioned-
You, Jennifer, just, uh, trustee Wilson, so right now we're just working on items nine to thirteen.
Oh, she, well, she mentioned fourteen, so that's why I was asking the question.
That's okay. So right now we're just doing, Jennifer, just nine to thirteen. Sure.
Okay, so I do have a question by nine to thirteen, well, actually, and about all of them that have the um, the wording, is there any way we can get the wording updated to where it'll be more, um, so where it would be less questions, you know what I'm saying, in regards to what's, what's, what it's actually for? Because the wording, it can be misconstrued and confusing, you know what I'm saying? And we want to make sure that we're not leaving any, um, you know, open access to somebody misinterpreting what it's supposed to be or what it's really meant. So is there a way we can, uh, you know, modify or update the wording for this? Because that, that, I think that's where the confusion is starting to come.
Yeah, let us work on that too. So what happens when you approve the first project? It's, it's a lump sum and then we come back and we have these components of it. So yes, to answer your question, let us work on that and see, maybe give you some examples of what, what might help you to see this a little clearer.
Okay, uh, Ms. Uh, Chair, Madam Chair, are we going to table this then until that wording comes back? Because I don't-
No. No, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, then I'll just have to vote against it because I don't like the word.
It's okay.
But you're not the chair, so let the chair answer.
Project drive the underway, I mean.
Okay, just, just, just to make sure, we could, we could do a motion to postpone it, but I just want to make sure and, and let everyone know that the projects are on the way. And so if we, and Jennifer, please let me know if I'm correct, or if we were to postpone this, what effect would it, would, would it take for the current projects? What would happen?
Um, I don't have a full project list with me, um, so I, I could come back with additional information, but uh, really, we currently waiting on this do have projects just sort of on pause that would use these particular services. So in general, it is just adding to our various projects.
And this is something that we have already approved. These projects?
Well, you've approved the contracts.
Okay.
Um, and so under the master service agreement. So as we do, as we need these different construction-related services towards those projects, that's when we go utilize these master service agreements. So when we get to this portion of a, a project, um, right, we still may be working on other portions of the project, but when we get to this part, say needing professional surveying services for that portion, we would need to delay that piece of the project.
Okay.
Chair Saldivar, Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now that I've been duly recognized by the chair, uh, Ms. Wilson, I, um, uh, appreciate your comment, but uh, procedurally, Chair, we do have a a motion and a second discussion. I'd frankly like to call the question, call a vote, please.
Trustee Stoma, I just, I'm a bit confused. Ask what questions here.
Trustee Stoma, we, we can't hear you properly.
Uh, I have one or two more questions I asked them. Hello? Can you not hear me?
Okay, trust- trustee Sullivan, do you have a motion? So, uh, trustee, if I could clarify?
I withdraw, I withdraw my motion to call the question and, and light of trustee Stoma's desire to ask questions, you bet. As long as it's a meaningful and productive uh discussion, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies it. Trustee, uh, Stoma.
Can you hear me properly?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to keep my voice. Jennifer, just a point of clarification. So uh, the board has approved these contracts. You have initiated the master services agreement under that approval. And those are, we have a bunch of funding uh for these contracts, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, we have funding for the contract, yeah.
So really, I guess the question in my mind is, is this really an issue for the board? Because this is, this becomes uh really a, an accounting management issue, an issue as to where to take funds from uh in your accounting system, the financial accounting system, is that correct?
Yes, the total spend amount is approved. Uh, this just changes what internal funding sources the funds come from.
And my question is, isn't that an administrative decision? I mean, the board doesn't have to make that decision, do we?
And what was the question?
Is it an administrative decision?
Yes, we think it is.
Uh, really?
You're kind of breaking up, so we're asking each other exactly what you're asking, but yes, this normally would be an administrative decision. And normally, we wouldn't be bringing this to the board. We were just trying to be clear about. Um, it was coming out of, I, I mean, initially, it was coming out of, uh, the two thousand and fourteen bond, the two thousand and seventeen Series A, which was a refinancing, but n- n- normally, we would not be bringing this. We, we had approval for the projects. We have the money. The money doesn't change, so.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, barely. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you. And I, uh, now, uh, would, um, along the lines with trustee Sullivan had recommended, I, I suggest re-vote on these. I don't think, I don't think they need to come back to us. That's my opinion, my personal opinion. Since you already have authorization to do this, it's, it's how you account for the money and where you, you know, get, gather the money within the budget is your, it's your decision. So I, I should just re-vote on these.
I do think it's worth noting that every delay we have on the project means that we have less money to spend on the project because of the way the, the uh, construction costs have gone up, so.
And so just to make sure, this is something, um, that we could be able to change the language in the future, I guess. Is that, okay? Just want to make sure that we are able to do that. Um, any further comments? So hearing none, we're gonna do a roll call uh for items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. So trustee Mario.
Hi.
Trustee Kane.
Hi.
Trustee vote.
Hi.
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilson.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, trustee Stoma.
Hi.
Trustee Pierce.
Abstain.
And myself, I. The item passes. Items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen pass. May I have a motion in a second for item number fourteen?
So move Stoma.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions for fourteen?
I think Jennifer was, um, explaining.
Yes, I believe the question was, why have the costs gone up? And there, it's really just that the number of real estate transactions that we are doing has gone up. Uh, we've been, as I'm even referenced earlier for Magnolia, we ended up having to go back and do a second land purchase there. So that was an additional unexpected transaction. Uh, we had purchased some land at the transportation center. We did a, uh, land swap with Harris County. Uh, we also have, um, and then still upcoming is we are still working, already approved by the board, the sale of buildings nine and ten at University Park. We also already have board approval to work on the sale of uh, about fifty-five acres of land in Montgomery. Um, and so there's just the amount of real estate transactions that we have been engaging in uh, is a larger number than historically had been the case. And so as a result, that does increase the total spending authorization needed under the contracts. Um, for any given purchase, when that purchase comes to the board for approval on that board agenda item is where the cost of that is a- approved separately for each uh, sale or purchase. But for the brokerage services uh, contract, the spending authorization on that contract is where this agenda item is requesting an additional amount.
So for every, every, um, sale or purchase, we have, we're having to pay four to six percent for brokerage fees, so. Um, and we've got, we've had a number of, um, sales and purchases and we have a couple more coming up. So the request was back in two thousand and nineteen, and so so much has changed since then, that we're asking for more money so that we can proceed with these sales, so. And, and transactions that we have. We're not buying anything. We're getting rid of it, so.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I wasn't here in twenty nineteen, so hence why I asked the question.
Yeah, we have a list. I, I can show you. I'll, I'll send it to you what we've, where all this is going, so.
Any further comments? So hearing none, I'm gonna do another roll call for this particular item fourteen. Our, uh, trustee Mario.
Hi.
Trustee Kane.
Hi.
Vote.
Hi.
Trustee Sullivan. Trustee Sullivan?
Uh, yes, I, thank you.
Trustee Wilson?
I'm gonna abstain.
Trustee Stoma?
Hi.
Trustee Pierce?
I'm gonna abstain.
Myself, I. Item passes. Thank you. So now we're gonna move, now we're gonna move to financials. Jennifer, please stay where you are.
Yes, yes, thank you. I hope you don't mind that I just stayed up here. Uh, I have for everyone tonight, the financial report. If we could go to the next slide, please. And the first section is an update on the COVID stimulus funds that I had also reported on last month. And then after that will be the regular monthly financial report. If we could go to the next slide, please. So I had presented on this last month, uh, but if you remember, I had tried, wanted to repeat several times that the numbers I presented last month did not include the fall awards because we were still in the process of getting those out. Uh, we are still working on getting out the second eight-week term. Um, and that usually goes out in November because of the later start. But other than that relatively small piece, we have now awarded all of the fall student awards. So I wanted to update this presentation for everyone. And on this one, if you remember the chart from last month, I did receive some feedback uh, that it wasn't as clear as it could be. So I hope, uh, this new format is helpful. What I've tried to show here i- in the pie is the total two hundred and sixteen million in COVID stimulus funds that we have received, uh, from the Department of Education through the stimulus bills. In the solid color is the portion of that two hundred and sixteen million that has already been either awarded to students or spent towards the institutional awarded amount. The shaded colors are the portions that have not yet been spent in the anticipated amounts. So here, I wanted to note that for the student awards, and when I reported this last month, we had awarded forty-six million to students. We are now at seventy million awarded to students. So we dispersed twenty-five million this fall to students. Uh, the other piece is the institutional aid. There, last month, we were at twenty-three million, and now here, we are at twenty-nine million in institutional aid awarded. Now, the additional anticipated amounts will be still another ninety-two million is what we are planning to award in student eight, um, which is definitely well above the minimum required. So in total, at the end of the day here, we plan on getting out a hundred and sixty-two million total between the seventy already awarded and the additional ninety-two that is still anticipated. Um, and that's compared to eighty-six million is really all that we are required to award. Uh, so with these COVID stimulus funds, we really have prioritized the student awards. Next slide, please. Uh, this just also provides an update on the number of awards per campus and in total. So the total, um, it's, it's an unduplicated headcount. So ninety-five thousand students have received an award through the COVID stimulus funds. And this is in addition to the normal Pell Grants that goes out through financial aid. Next slide, please. Similarly, this is an update to the demographic slide showing, uh, who has received those awards. And now the awards, um, are not, the criteria is not demographically based. It is, um, pretty much everybody is eligible, but we do give tiered amounts based on financial need. Um, so there is where I think the demographics perhaps reflect where that need may be. Next slide, please. And then just a few quotes that we wanted to include, uh, from students that we've received uh, positive feedback about how these funds have helped them. Next slide, please. So again, just do want to share that how a lot of students are using these- So again, just do want to share that how a lot of students are using these funds to help them pay for rent, help pay for living expenses, help pay for their textbooks and their classes.
So board, we will have until, I believe, they're still waiting on the Department of Education to send some guidelines, but it looks like the stimulus funding will be extended through May of '23. I'm going to guess that before that's over with, we'll give out about 150,000 awards, something like that, to our students. So that's in addition to Pell, by the way. So we're, we're helping a lot of our students, a lot.
Jennifer, I do have a question, if that's okay. If we can go back to item, I mean, I'm sorry, number 24, slide number 24. I think that's what it was. So this might be a question for you or Dr. Head, but Lone Star College Houston North, I see a little bit over 2,500 total recipients. Why is it such a low number? Is it, we don't have a lot of students there or?
Houston North.
Houston, Houston North.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it is our smallest campus in total.
Okay.
Yeah, that's actually a pretty high percentage of your students, right? I mean, that's a, you may have the highest, we'll get your report on how that break down, breaks down, but I'm going to guess that that's over 50% of your students, Dr. Ryan. 80, 80% of, yeah.
80%.
Yeah.
So that's good. It's just very misleading the way it's, at least for me. So thank you for the clarification.
I will work that on that, maybe for future formats of this to maybe see if there's a way I can show percentage of the campus student population size.
That's fine. I mean, this, it's just me unless anyone else has any issues, but I'm fine with that. Thank you, Jennifer.
That was going to be my question. This is trustee Iris Wilson, because I'm Houston North too. So I just, I was going to ask that when she completed it. But thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chair of Saldabar, Mike Sullivan, may I be duly recognized by the chair, please?
Yes, trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. Let me, let me take a moment just to say what, how strong these testimonials are from these students. And I often talk about how the board focuses or should focus on student success. And without these students receiving this funding, one could not have made it to school. One used it to pay for gas. One used it to pay the bills. Well, another used it to pay the rent. I mean, these are impactful statements from students. And our main, I don't want to say main, but I think our main goal is to help the community as a college. And we're doing that. And these are people that are just getting started in school, they're coming back to school, they're getting certificates or training, whatever the case may be. We're having a real impact. So Dr. Head, thank you for bringing these disbursement recommendations to us on how to use the money. Clearly, you're making an impact, Jennifer. Great recap and to the entire board, I think we should certainly recognize the good work that's being done out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could go to the next slide, I can go, next would be the regular monthly financial report. So first, starting with revenues. So this financial report is for the month ending September 30th, 2021. So this is actually the first monthly report for the current fiscal year 2022. If you remember, last month was the last time I reported on last fiscal year 2021. And for 2021, in December, is when I will have the annual financial report for the board for that year. But with this kicking off, financially speaking, fiscal year 2022, for the month of September, we had actual revenues of 67 million, which is 16.7%. Now there, you can just see from the chart that that is lower than prior years. And that is expected because we know for the budget that the board approved, we had assumed flat credit hours from last year to this. But our credit hours right now for the fall were down. And so we estimated the impact of that on our revenues to be about 1.1 million. So that's what this lower percentage would most likely reflect is that we are bringing in fewer revenues than we had budgeted for so far. Next slide, please. And here on actual expenditures for one month, this is 29 million or seven and a half percent, which is relatively flat to where we have been in our spending patterns in prior years for the first month of the year. If we could go to the next slide, please. Now, this slide and the next is where I show the forecasted variance. So on this side, it's the revenues. And you see right now, it's showing zero, and I just mentioned the 1.1. That 1.1, we will include in the forecasted variance next month. The reason I wanted to wait is in response to credit hours being down, the 2.4% as of official day, the estimated $1.1 million impact of that has already been put out to all the campuses and vice chancellor offices of the college to reduce their budgets in total by 1.1 million. So that total reduction was allocated out to all areas. And that reduction was being worked on throughout the month of October. So if we could go to the next slide, you see here is also on the expenditures of forecasted variance of zero, what I would expect to show next month is the 1.1 million negative variance in revenues, but then also show the offsetting reduction in the budget of 1.1 million. So that was why I didn't want to show one side of that when we have taken the action to reduce budgets offsetting that financial impact. I think that concludes my report. I would be happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Any questions?
Yes, Chair Saldabar, Mike Sullivan, I can be duly recognized by the chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Could we go back to slide 30, I think it is, on the revenue, Jennifer? Okay, looking at the state appropriations, tuition fees, taxes. If I remember correctly, our budget planning, we just kind of generally say that our revenue is in thirds, a state appropriation, a third tuition and fees, and a third taxes, property taxes. If I remember correctly, these numbers don't reflect that?
Right, now, the split roughly is property taxes is about 45% of our total revenues, followed by tuition and fees at around 30%, and then state appropriations was 20%.
Okay.
That was true a number of years ago. And one of our goals was to level out the tuition and fees and then the local taxes. But what has happened is our enrollment stalled for a couple of different reasons. One was COVID, and then the hurricane, but then assessed value jumped up so much that we've gotten a little out of whack with that. So, but you're right, at one time, it was a third, a third, a third.
Okay. And is this, I see for the month ending September 30th. So what is our fiscal year run again? I forgot.
The fiscal year runs September 1 through August 31st.
Okay, already. Thank you very much. Appreciate you answering questions. Thank you, Dr. Head, Jennifer.
So we're sort of aligned with the state of Texas, right? September 1st. That's usually when, okay. Any further questions? So here in, now, thank you, Jennifer. Very good presentation. Thank you. So our next item is the redistricting presentation. So do we have Ms. McBride available? Yes.
Can you hear me now? Great. Is it okay if I take my mask off just to speak to you this evening? Thank you. And I have my colleague as well, Annie Stein, who presented to you guys last month regarding demographers. There we go. And so tonight, I really wanted to do, I know that I have spoken with you guys as a full board back in December about the redistricting process, and we were anxiously awaiting census data, which would have been due in April, didn't come out that April, actually didn't come out until August. And then again, I spoke to the redistricting committee in September. So tonight's presentation is just to refresh a couple of things I would have spoken about in December and in September, but also to focus on some specific aspects of the redistricting process where I need to begin to have some feedback from the trustees in order to plan an appropriate process for Lone Star College that has us meeting the requirements of the deadlines that we need to meet. So just to refresh everyone's memory so that we're all on the same page, why are we going through this process? Every 10 years, we know that we get information from the Census Bureau about what has changed in our jurisdiction over the last 10 years with respect to our total population. But we also get other information regarding voting age population, individuals who are over eight, over 18 in our, our population. So redistricting is the process that we go through every 10 years of responding to that data as we're required to understand in federal law. We've got to respond to those population shifts by rebalancing or reapportioning our elective districts. And when we redraw lines, that really is shifting population. That represents individuals being moved into and out of a single-member district. So state law requires us to redivide or to rebalance our single-member districts. And the key point, threshold point, that we're always looking at, if the census data indicates the difference between our most populous district and our least populous single-member district is greater than 10%. So that's the initial inquiry that we have to ask ourselves in this process. Need a demographer to answer that question. So when we begin implementing this process, the first presentation, in addition to providing some legal analysis, will answer that question. Hey, we've looked at your census data, we're comparing it to 2010, and we're looking at it now, and it was under 10% for 2010. That's why you were allowed to adopt the map that you were allowed to adopt, but it either is or is not under 10% now. If it is not over 10%, we don't have a duty to redistrict. If it is over, which I imagine that it will be, almost every jurisdiction that we're doing is over 10%, considerably over, not 11%, 12%, but we're talking about 20, 30, 40, 50, 70% over because we've just had huge population increases in Texas. So what has to be done? If you were a part of the December conversation as the full board or a part of the September conversation as the redistricting committee, you will note that this is the same slide. There are essentially seven steps. First, understanding the legal requirements and deadlines, which we've gone over together twice. Determining what is the redistricting process that's going to be used. In particular, how are we going to solicit trustee input, which is so important, as well as public input, which is so important, into the redrawing of maps, assuming we hit that 10% threshold? What criteria are we going to use to judge maps? To talk about our support of a map or our non-support of a map? Because what we say as trustees, what we say as community members about maps is important. And we want to say things that are legally permissible and not talk about things or consider criteria that is not legally permissible. So if we adopt a language for assessing our maps, traditional redistricting principles, that will help us to have conversations that are legally permissible about those maps that will cover a whole host of issues. Then, of course, we have to hire a demographer, which was the subject of last month's presentation, then begin implementing that redistricting process. And then importantly, trustee, having actual trustee and public comment on the plans and ultimately adopting the plan. So of those seven criteria, tonight, I want to focus on three just based on individual board member questions and feedback that I've been receiving just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And that is, what is, what does a trustee engagement model look like? What is a community input model look like? What are some traditional redistricting criteria that we would use to judge proposed maps? And then what does the process look like in a little bit more detail from beginning to end, which we would start in earnest beginning in January to get you on the road to adopt a map before the first data file, which is July 23rd of 2022 for your November of '22 election? So who's involved in the process? Well, it really depends on the process adopted by the board. But at a minimum, the board, chancellor slash administration, an administrative point person, that is sort of a clearinghouse for information, sometimes active-minded citizens in the form of public engagement, public comment, and even elected officials from overlapping jurisdiction, and they weigh in on the process. But ultimately, as we discussed last December, as we discussed in September, this past September, and I will continue to reiterate, this is a board-driven process. There are a lot of stakeholders in the process, but ultimately, the final decision rests with the board, and it is a board-driven process. So we've talked in more detail in the two previous presentations about legal requirements. But I do want to highlight one legal requirement, and that is, we have to adopt our map, no matter what type of model that we engage, and we engage in for public input or trustee input, by the 90th day before the first election at which this new map can be implemented. You have elections in November of even years. We have an election coming up, November 8th, 2022. Hard to believe we're talking about that as coming up. It's a year away. But that really means that we have to redistrict by August 10th of 2022. But if you remember the timeline that we've been discussing, that data sandwiched in between the first day for candidates to file and the last day for candidates to file. So we don't want to wait to that 90th day. We want to get a map adopted before the first data file, which is July 23rd. So that really has us adopting in a map by June. So what we're going to be talking about tonight is kind of what will we be doing from January till June to meet that timeline? So talking about trustee and community input. Again, this is something that's at the board discretion in terms of developing an engagement model. But this is the crucial piece of the redistricting process. Because as we'll talk about a little later, you know, we can have redistricting principles about not crossing a county precinct, having single-member districts that are relatively equal size, adopting a system where the most and least populous district are under 10%. But the most crucial elements of our system is, as we move population to bring our entire system back into balance, are we keeping neighborhoods and communities that are alike together? And where we're having to make a break across a single-member district, are we using a natural barrier, a natural political barrier, our neighborhood barrier, our community of interest barrier to, to make that dividing line between single-member districts? And the persons who know that best are the board and our community stakeholders. And so that's why that public engagement, trustee engagement is so important. And it's important all the way through the process from the beginning and at regular intervals all the way through the process. And it's two types of engagement. One is an educational engagement, engaging and educating the trustees on the process and the law. So to empower you guys to effectively look at maps and examine them and advocate for a map or maps that you support, but also to educate the community on the law and the timeline in addition to engaging them on proposed maps. So the engagement process, both at the trustee level and at the community level, serves two functions, getting feedback on proposed map and our proposed criteria for judging those maps, and it's educational. The educational part of the engagement strategy happens at the, at the beginning. And the input, once we were all educated and on the same page, getting input on specific maps happens at the beginning and end of the process. But very important that we, that we have that throughout the process. And in my experience in working in redistrictings 2010, 2020, 2010, and now in 2020, they can take several forms. At the board level, board engagement obviously happens at board meetings where there is a specific item on the agenda regarding redistricting. So if you will recall, when I spoke to you last this Um, so if you will recall, when I spoke to you last December, and again in, in September. There was a timeline of different um, um, decision points that either the board. Um, or the redistricting committee making a recommendation to the board had, had to meet. Um, and so those would, would be at either board meetings specifically designated for that purpose. Or at a regular board meeting with something, you know, uh, on the agenda, talking about redistricting. Um, so board meetings or workshops. Um, also particularly for jurisdictions of your size. Um, one-on-one meetings between legal personnel and the demographer to get um, trustee input. That's then vetted back to the full board um, for consideration. And then community meetings um, that, that board members hold um, with their constituents, either um, college district wide. Or within individuals um, single member districts. And then public input similarly can take place at public board meetings during your public comment period or during a hearing. Um, that is specifically designated at a board meeting to receive public input. Either about the process, about the criteria, or about proposed maps. Um, a community task force um, that provides input to the board or to um, a redistricting committee. Town halls, I've seen entities use um, that can either be done virtually or by telephone or in person. Um, that are college district wide. Um, I've also seen the utilization of single member district-specific community meetings. Um, either done virtually or done in person at a location. Um, either a, a college facility or a, a mutually convenient facility within a single member district. I've also seen great use of, now that most jurisdictions have a website. That the community is familiar going to and accessing, great use of websites. Um, having the uh, uh, a designated redistricting webpage. Um, that provides educational materials to the public. As well as inviting the public to comment on proposed maps, either through a survey or an interactive map tool. Um, and then using the website as a place to house educational videos. Um, that um, can be developed by the legal team. We do that sometimes for some of the jurisdictions that we work for. That explain the law at a thirty-thousand-foot view, the timeline that's been adopted by the board. The criteria that has been adopted by the board, and explain next steps. Um, because this is a long process, um, it is a marathon, not a sprint. It's very, very important that not only the board understand next steps. Um, as we're going from January um, to June, but the public as well. They understand kind of what the trajectory is and what to expect in January versus what to expect in March. Versus what to expect in May versus what to expect in June. Um, and typically, if we have those sort of check-in opportunities, the uh, the smoother the process goes. Um, but again, I wanted to provide you some example of trustee engagement and community engagement. Um, that is completely up to the board in terms of how they want to um, um, style those engagement mechanisms. And you don't have to choose just one. I've had um, entities um, that choose a variety. Um, particularly now as we're coming out of COVID, um, really using lessons learned from COVID. In terms of making community engagement accessible to the public. So a combination of in-person telephone as well as video conference. Um, I've seen um, a lot of jurisdictions use this time around um, for this set of redistricting. Before I go on to the next couple of slides, I know I've given a lot of different examples of types of trustee engagement. And public engagement, any questions or thoughts um, about that?
Uh, you mentioned that you would, I'm sorry, can I? Uh, you mentioned that you will be uh, putting the maps together, starting in January. What? What information will be shown on these maps?
Correct. So in January, the first presentation that you would receive would be a, a very good question. A joint presentation by the legal team, me as your legal team and the demographer, that's presenting your data. Your, your demographic and census data for twenty twenty and comparing it to twenty-ten. So it will be tables, the first thing that you will see, and us walking you through the legal significance of those numbers. And whether that threshold has been hit. Um, and then just looking at the twenty-ten boundaries of your map. Um, that will be the, the first presentation, and then understanding the law, what do we do with that information? Um, and what does that mean in terms of rebalancing your districts? Then based on the criteria that you adopt, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later um, today. The next meeting um, that you will have, if you authorize the demographer to take that criteria. Is to bring back to you some initial maps, two to three, that meet that criteria in different ways. Focus on the criteria, put a priority over, you know, you might have ten criteria, but um. A map might focus on two or three more than the other, you know, five or six. Um, and then this map might focus on, it complies with all of them, but a bigger focus on three or four of them. Um, and see kind of what you like, what you want tweaked. Um, but we need a, a starting place. Um, to begin talking about um, what you guys want to see for purposes of twenty twenty. Um, so typically, I have jurisdictions that really like the demographer. Um, based on the criteria that you adopt, based on your data, based on knowing that we have to bring everything back under ten percent. And comply with the other criteria that you um, adopt to bring back two or three maps for you to consider. Now, some jurisdictions will say, based on your initial uh, data, here's some things that we would like to see. We know this particular single member district has to get bigger, this particular single member district has to get smaller. And we already have some thoughts as a board about how to achieve that. So when you bring back an initial, bring, bring back initial maps, we want you to have this in mind, that in mind, and that in mind. So you can do it either of those ways, but we just need a place to begin discussion. Um, and so those will be some very, very preliminary maps, just to get the juices flowing. It doesn't mean that you have to accept that. Um, typically, by the time we get to May or June. The final maps that you are considering look very different from those initial maps, because those are really just to begin a discussion. So first meeting, look at data, do we have to redistrict? How, 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 how can we discuss that data? Um, and then you charge the demographer and myself with either taking some initial considerations into account. And bringing some initial maps back, or charging us just to bring some initial maps back. That focus on some of the population issues that we know we have to rebalance. And then we have a discussion at the section, second meeting, um, where you, you um, uh, react to those maps. And so what is shown on the maps um, is typically um, three types of maps. One is your twenty-ten map, one is the proposed map. And then I always like to uh, provide you a side-by-side. So you can see the difference between a proposed map and the twenty-two, um, twenty-ten map. Um, what you always see on the proposed map are the twenty-ten lines. And the colors, each single member district has its own color, and it will have that same color throughout all the iterations of maps. So if you're single member district one, and you are blue on one map, you will always be blue. On every map that's shown to you through the uh, redistricting pop, process. If you're red, you'll always be red. If you're green, you'll always be green. If you're yellow, you'll always be yellow. The color represents what we're talking about in terms of the new boundary. The hard lines um, represent the twenty-ten boundary. So what you will see on the maps. Is color either bleeding over a line, that means a single member district is getting larger, because it's bleed or spilling over the twenty-ten line. Or you will see within a single member district two colors, meaning a color is not making it all the way to the twenty-ten boundary. It means that single member district is getting smaller. Um, so that's what you will always see. And then we try to circle, if it's clear and not chaotic on the map, where the specific change is. So that you can see either that color bleeding over a twenty-ten boundary. Or you can see the color not making it all the way to a twenty-ten boundary, showing that that SMD is getting smaller. And then always behind a proposed map, so you have the original map, proposed map, side-by-side with circles. Where the changes are, um, you will always have the data that shows what is the size of each of the single member districts. And what is the demographic breakdown by demographic group um, of that map? And how does that compare to where you were twenty-twenty without doing anything? And then how does that compare to twenty-ten? You will always have that analysis.
Is, is there a substrate of streets and locations that we know that we can find our way around it?
So what you will see, um, the first map will be a higher level view. So you will see, you will see highways, um, because it's, it's at a larger bird's eye view. Then where we're showing you a specific change, um, and sometimes we'll show you by SMD. So for proposed map, um, we'll show you by single member district, we'll show you a view just of that single member district. And the changes in that single member district circled, that will be a street level view. So you'll actually be able to see streets on a, on a map, um, normally presented to you as a PowerPoint presentation. If we do a workshop, your demographer has the ability to make real-time changes. So hook up his computer to a screen, such as the one we're looking at today. And as you're making comments about, I like this change, I don't like this change, I'd like to see this line moved here or there. You can see that in real, real, real time, and how it impacts a street or a highway that you might be cutting across. So you get both um, um, a paper view, which is sort of a snapshot in time. And then if you want to make some real-time changes in, in a meeting, um, if we have a meeting dedicated for that purpose. Um, his laptop can be connected to a screen, so you can see those real-time changes. So you always get multiple views, you get an, a view of how the change impacts the entire system. And where those specific changes are within that system, and then by single member districts specifically looking. Um, closer in, more of a bird's eye view, with a circle around the specific change where you can see down to the street. Um, where the impact is. So typically, these presentations, when we're looking at a proposed map. Um, it's a slide deck that might be seventy pages, but it's a lot of pictures so that you can see specifically. What's happening in a particular single member district, and we walk you through that slide deck.
This is uh, trustee Sullivan, just uh, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, um, a couple of suggestions. One is, I think each time you speak with us, show us the timeline, little graphic timeline with the high-level. Milestones, it doesn't need to be detailed to remind us where we are in this process along this time. Because this is a critical timeline, there's no, you know, there's no variance, in other words, in our schedule. I mean, we have to hit this, right? So it'd help me to know where, where we are in a graphic form. Uh, that would help a lot of people, believe me. I, I work with high-level executives all the time, and I'd rather look at a graphic than a chart like this.
Okay.
Uh, secondly, uh, I assume that um. There's detailed planning, I don't know if it's going on or gonna go on with the redistrict, commit, redistricting committee. But I would suggest you guys start this as soon as possible. And each time you, we have a meeting like this, you know, you tell us the entire board what's been done. Then you tell us what needs to be done in the next period before a next board meeting. And then you give a, you ask specifics of us, as what you need from us. That will help us help you. Because I, I doubt if anybody, I mean, trustee Sullivan has been through this before, I've been through it, but it's been back in two thousand, a long time. Uh, but the rest of us have probably not been through this before, and that, we, I certainly need a refresher. So any, any way you can help box us in, as to what we, you know, what, where we're at. What the decisions we need to make, the information you need from us, in that full timeline. Will be helpful for everyone. And if we have, need to have a, a larger workshop, which I can see coming, at least a half a day. Uh, to work through, uh, once he has, has his preliminary maps, as you've, you've described quite uh, confidently. Uh, then we, we need to do that. But that's my recommendation to you, you're trying to make progress here. Uh, this is what I do for a living, ma'am, I'm a project manager, program manager. I mean, this is what I do, I move international teams this way. So I'm just suggesting that, you know, put a little more structure to this, and help, and help guide us along. Uh, to the decisions we need to make. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stoma.
Chair Saldivar, can I jump in please? Mike Sullivan?
One, one second, trustee Sullivan, I had, Marigo.
Thank you.
Hands raised, yes, sir.
Thank you, um, thank you again for the presentation, I think, very informative, uh, and uh. I like to think uh, that um, I look forward to looking at the maps. Um, and in an ideal situation, we just twinker, you know, move it a little bit here and there and, you know, under. But we know the things are always, what kind of you want to. My, my question is, um, uh, given that. We didn't, you know, I know you mentioned the two thousand ten map, Willie, Willie was on the two thousand ten map. Uh, the district was, uh, the, the, uh, the, the districts were created and I think I got ran for a, a board member. Uh, the, the one board member who ran the first time under single member districts, and that, and I think that was two thousand fourteen, uh, the end of. And um, so, so my question has to do with, uh, do we need to, is it any legal issues that, you know, we, we really, I mean. The board at the time did not really explore everything you're talking about at this point, you know, um. If I, if I'm correct, I mean, it was basically given to us, or at least we didn't engage, do everything, the community and all that stuff. Is there any, 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 any uh, roadblocks or any challenges that we need to address? And I guess my, I, I'm also, want to make sure, and I'm, I'm sort of piggybanging on, on uh, on uh, trustee Stoma. Uh, uh, to make sure we, we clear on, on the next steps and make sure we, we meet the timelines and. And uh, we, yes, we, we need to find out what we need to do next, but, but uh, as far as the legal aspects of, you know, what, what we need to deal with. Since we, since it's a board, we didn't deal with it before. I just want to make sure that, that that's not going to be a stumbling block, I guess. Do you have any, any comments on that as to how it might impact our, us moving forward, the fact that this is really the first time?
Sure. And so the reason why we refer to it as the twenty-ten map, even though you didn't adopt it in twenty-ten. It was based on your twenty-ten census data, so it, it, because twenty-twenty didn't, um, did, did not exist at the time. So when you redistrict as opposed to initial districting. Other than sort of that ninety-day deadline, which is the deadline to actually adopt your map. Um, the deadline for uh, adopting any other resolutions. Or the number of community meetings and how those community meetings have to be noticed, is completely up to the board. Um, there are some requirements with respect to initial districting, but with respect to redistricting, it really is a board-driven process. So the, so the level of board member engagement, the number of resolutions the board wants to adopt. The level of community engagement, and how you provide notice to the community of those engagement opportunities. Aren't dictated by statute. Um, so it is up to the board to determine um, the level of engagement. And how to communicate that engagement. Um, so in some respects, when you're doing a redistricting. Um, you, you have much more flexibility um, um, with respect to your engagement models. Whether it's trustee engagement or public engagement. So I don't foresee any issues because of that, that flexibility that you have.
And a, a follow-up, but, so, 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 um, even though it is a board's prerogative on how, how we proceed. Uh, you will establish the parameters in terms of law, in terms of, we're going the right way, and whether we're not, we don't have to revisit, you know, go back again. Because we, that's, that's all I'm saying, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And to refresh everyone's memory, I do want to go um. Uh, to a slide about implementing the process, just so that you understand from a bird's eye view what we're doing. Oh, I'm sorry, you had more questions, I'm sorry.
Sullivan had it.
Oh, I apologize, trustee Sullivan, I, 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 I didn't see you on the screen, apologize.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yeah, uh, first of all, no apology needed ever. This is collaborative, and we're gonna talk over each other from time to time, that's gonna happen. Uh, so, uh, thank you for recognizing me, um, chair Saldivar, being duly recognized now. With respect to um, uh, trustee Stoma's questions about timelines and progress and meetings. Um, reach out to me anytime, Mike, and share your thoughts, happy to, to visit anytime at all. Text, phone, email, whatever, it goes to everyone. The um, the redistricting committee is a reminder, is myself, Pierce and Marilio. And I brought this item as a future board item to be discussed several months ago. Anticipating that it was around the corner, and then when I. And then when I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the committee, then we had our first committee meeting, which of course I think some trustees were actually on remotely, uh, which is welcomed. And we spent a lot of time, uh, hearing from Lisa McBride. And now she's coming back with a little additional information, but I like the fact that it was highlighted and read what we need to move on. So, w- once we have this presentation tonight and questions are answered, it would be my plan to, uh, visit with the chair and the administration to have another redistricting committee meeting, uh, soon to start acting on those red, uh, action items, if you will, so that we can keep moving. We're, we're out of the starting gate, uh, but we got a lot of work to do. And, and I'm, I'm really committed to moving as quickly and fairly on it as possible, uh, with full community and board engagement. So Mike, that's kind of where I'm at.
Trust, trustee Sullivan, I thank you, I thank you for the offer and the, and the, I, I offer the same back. And I, and further than that, I, I offer my professional skills, uh, to assist you. Certainly I'm not, I would be a, how should I say? Uh, a worker, a worker being not the commander, uh, assist you and, and, and your committee and, and helping document all this. So, you know, I offer my services if, if you wish to have them, just let me know.
You bet, yeah, would, would enjoy the, the opportunity to do that, really would. So chair Saldivar, that, those are my comments, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you trustee Sullivan, yes ma'am, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, and with respect to the process, of course, you've seen the chart, which is at the end of my presentation. It's at the beginning of the December presentation as well as the September presentation. But I thought of, of showing it to you in another way with a little bit more verbiage. Um, so the, the first thing that's a critical that be done, that we began doing in December, um, as well as in September, is making sure the board and the committee are thoroughly briefed on the legal requirements and the deadlines. And so every meeting will include, um, a reminder of what the legal requirements are in the deadlines, particularly the legal requirements at issue, uh, with respect to what we're considering a, at that particular meeting, our, our committee meeting. So the first bullet there, we've got a, a check mark on, but it's an ongoing because every time we meet, there will be a refresher of the legal requirements in the deadline, um, with highlighting or emphasizing what's important, um, for that meeting that we're deciding. But the next step, and that's what I mentioned in my earlier discussion, um, in January, is to have a presentation to the board regarding your demographic and census analysis, comparing to where we were in 2010 to where we are in 2020 and what does that mean moving forward in terms of how we need to respond? And making sure you understand that data and the different types of data that are available. Total population, voting age population, citizen voting age population. We talked about that a little bit in December, we talked about that again in September. The difference between those different types of pieces of data and the different areas of law that they go to in terms of questions that they answer. So we'll be reviewing that again when you actually, um, have your data presented to you in January, um, as an initial step, that's a small step, um, a small bite, um, that we're going to take, um, in this process. Then the next step, once we have, um, um, an understanding of your data, what it means for 2020, what it means for, um, having to rebalance your map, um, is, um, the board, um, adopting redistricting criteria. We're going to talk a little bit about possible criteria tonight. Um, the reason that that is important is if you recall, you know, drawing single member districts is a little bit like being Goldilocks in terms of what you can and can, can and cannot consider. And particularly one consideration, consideration of race, national origin and ethnicity. Remember we had that conversation that the Voting Rights Act requires us to consider it, but the constitution says that we can consider those issues in a very limited box to address a compelling governmental, um, interest and narrowly. Um, it has to be just to address that, that compelling governmental interest. So we developed crit, we, we developed criteria as the board in order to keep us within that box. So it's not the overwhelming consideration with respect to our maps. It is a consideration because the Voting Rights Act requires us to consider it, but we also consider other things like not spitting county precincts, um, not districting trustees out of their, um, current districts. Um, we can take that into consideration because that preserves continuity of leadership and it preserves, um, constituent trustee relations, keeping communities of interest together, um, keeping neighborhoods, um, together, um, making sure that our single member districts are relatively of equal size, coming under that 10%. Those are other things that we consider in conjunction with not violating section two of the Voting Rights Act, which means that our overwhelming consideration in this process is not race or national origin, um, um, or ethnicity. It is a whole holistic list of factors that we consider in conjunction that allows us to satisfy not only section two of the Voting Rights Act, but it allows us to, to satisfy the constitution as well. Um, so that's why we have that list of criteria that we talked about. Um, then obviously, once we understand what our data is, we, we develop, um, criteria, our next step is to begin considering maps. So remember what I just said, um, you probably will initially charge the demographer and me to come to you with some initial map so that you have something to react to, to kind of give us an idea of what are communities of interest, what are neighborhoods that you want to keep together? And what are, what are, uh, situations, um, that if we have to divide them across a single member district in order to bring things back into balance, um, would be acceptable to the board. Um, so we'll have, um, that conversation, um, and then continue to get board member input, community input, um, until we are in a process where, or at a place where we can develop a final plan. Um, so that is the process from beginning to end. What we need to begin, um, um, putting into place, um, is what does that board member engagement look like? And what does public engagement look like? So how are we going to utilize your website? Are we going to have town hall meetings? Are we going to have, um, community meetings within a single member district? Is board member engagement limited to community, um, to, uh, committee meetings and/or, uh, board meetings? Or are we going to have board member one-on-ones with the lawyer and the demographer? These are things that I just need you to begin thinking about, not make a final decision today, but think, thinking about the possibilities and what your preference would be. Um, and then when we talk about your census data in January, um, unless it's the preference of the board, uh, to come back and make a decision sooner, we can begin putting some, um, flesh on the bone of what that community and trustee engagement model, um, might look like. Now, in terms of redistricting criteria that are appropriate to consider, in addition to, uh, satisfying the requirements of the constitution, um, and the Voting Rights Act, we did talk about this, um, in our other meetings together, but I do want to remind you of appropriate criteria to use in analyzing a, a proposed map to bring the entire system back into balance. One is using identifiable geographic boundaries for SMD boundaries when possible, maintaining communities of interest or neighborhoods where possible, um, where we're not going to go over the 10% deviation or have single member districts that are not relatively equal size, accounting for other political boundaries like county, um, precincts or polling places, preserving existing single member district boundaries to the degree possible. In this process, there is the understanding of if it isn't broken, we don't need to fix it. And looking at the benchmark plan, if that plan satisfied constitutional, uh, principles and it satisfied a section, uh, two of the Voting Rights Act, only deviating from that benchmark plan, your 2010 plan, um, to the extent necessary to address population changes, but not making wholesale changes, um, because you have a benchmark plan that worked for your community. And so only deviating from that plan to the extent necessary to bring your system back into balance. Um, so that's typically a, a, a principle that a board will adopt is we, we want to see you and the demographer develop a proposed plan, at least initially, that makes the few, the fewest number of moves to our lines. Um, tell us how we do this, how we accomplish this, bring us back into balance under that 10% balance without creating any vote dilution of any minority group that was over 50% in a particular, um, single member district, um, with making the fewest number of moves. And so that's typically if the demographer is bringing back two or three plans, one plan the demographer will say is I was able to get under 10% with the fewest number of moves. That, that was my sole consideration. Um, and then the other two might have other, um, considerations, just so that you can see what that looks like. Because that's such an important typically criteria to a school board.
Before we proceed, just one second, I think I had, I saw trustee Sullivan's hand raised. Is that still correct?
Yeah, but I'll wait till the end, if that's okay. Yeah, just wanted to be in line, that's all, thank you, thank you for recognizing me.
And then I telegraphed that another appropriate criteria is preserving incumbencies. Um, even though under state law, you are allowed to phase a single member district plan as your terms naturally expire, you still have to continue to reside within your single member district, um, as it is drawn. And, um, the fact that you have adopted a single member district plan that you are phasing in, um, under the laws that are applicable to a college such as yours, um, is not an excuse to, um, not reside within your single member district. So as a result of that, courts say something that is appropriate and objective to consider that will be upheld if challenged is the current residence of a trustee and having as a criteria that that trustee's residence, if they're serving that community, remains within that single member district, however it may be with, with, um, redrawn. Um, so a typical redistricting criteria is preserve incumbencies. It's an, it's a, an appropriate factor, an appropriate criteria, and in fact, necessary under our state law, if we want to use the phase in option and not have everyone up for election, um, when we adopt this single member district plan, which even though most entities, school districts and colleges have the option of doing that, I don't know of any that do because it is so disruptive, um, obviously to the continuity of providing services, but they normally phase it in, um, what you're allowed to do under state law. Um, adopt single member districts that are compact, meaning that, um, they are physically compact as well as politically compact in terms of keeping neighborhoods and people who have like modes of transportation, like interests, like, um, physical, um, surroundings in the same single member districts and obviously making your single member districts contiguous because they are currently contiguous, contiguous. Preserving your current lines helps with the cont, um, cont, um, rigidity, um, um, requirement. And then the last two criteria really do deal with the appropriate consideration of race, ethnicity and national origin. As you can see that it's only two considerations out of a holistic list of considerations and any one time we are considering and balancing all of these. Um, so that our, our maps, um, and our rebalancing of the single member districts i- is a, um, is a thoughtful exercise, it's a balancing several considerations and not one consideration over another consideration. Um, that is a well thought out redistricting plan, um, that survives scrutiny by the Department of Justice if they were scrutinizing it, um, and, um, by a court under the Voting Rights Act. Um, and so I think there was a question before going on, um, either related to the criteria or related to things discussed before.
Was that the end?
Oh, at the end, okay, all right. So, these are criteria that I want, um, trustees to begin thinking about. Um, be, began, uh, thinking about if all of them are acceptable to you, some of them are acceptable to you. Because I do encourage us to adopt criteria before we begin drawing initial maps because there are going to come times when there might be one or two maps, um, could be three maps that, you know, trustees are appreciative of. And we've got to make a decision about one map and how do we break the tie? Having criteria and having conversations about a map that best serves all the criteria can help break that deadlock or that, that tie. Um, so I do think it's some, it's important and it provides us useful language to talk to each other as well as to talk to our community stakeholders about our maps.
So we, we do, I do have a question. On those criterias, the form that we adopt them is, how do, is it usually done by resolutions or to, okay?
So you, yes, you can do it by a resolution at the beginning of the process. You can come to consensus at the beginning of the process. And when you adopt a map, that map is always done by resolution and you can put the criteria in that was used to judge that map in the resolution that you adopt at the end. So I have entities doing it both ways, adopt their resolution, uh, adopt their criteria at the beginning as a formal resolution and then it's used throughout the process. Or I've had some entities, they come to consensus about what the criteria is, but they don't adopt a resolution at that point, they use it all the way through the process. And when they adopt their final map and explaining why they adopted that map, they include the criteria in that resolution. Um, so, so it is attached to the map that's finally adopted. And then I have entities that do it both ways, they adopt the resolution at the beginning and then the resolution they adopt at the end, choosing their chosen map, um, again, list the criteria.
And this is done like during the board meetings?
Yes ma'am, done during board meeting.
This trustee Stoma, I'm sorry, uh.
Trustee Stoma?
Yeah, I, I suppose the data is going to tell the tale. You know, as everybody says, let the data speak for itself. Could you, could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, I suppose that's, that's gonna, how should I say? The first look at the data, to me, will shake out the criteria. And it'll be clear, I think, as to what we need to do at that point. Otherwise, you know, we're just guessing. I'm serious, we're just guessing at this. Uh, the first maps is, as you explained earlier, your presentation is what we need to see. Then, then we can sit down and look at the criteria. I mean, the first criteria in my mind certainly is the diversity. You know, to see where the shifts in demographics have occurred, uh, in the various, uh, diverse categories. That's really the first cut. I mean, none of us are paid here, you know, we're not, you know, if we get reelected, we, we don't get a job, somebody pays us, right? Uh, so I, I'm not so sure that the, uh, you know, the physical boundaries, the, the highways, the rivers, the county lines are going to make that much difference. And that's my opinion, by the way, right now. But let's let the data speak. And that's, uh, that's what I suggest, as soon as, sooner we can get a map, you know, to look at and see where the shifts are, then we can have that criteria discussion. If we can do it in January, I'm up for doing it in January. We, you know, let's do it as soon as possible. Uh, if we have to make the decision on the demographer, if that's not clear yet, that's, that's the first step. And let this, let this gentleman or lady go to work and show us, show us what, what's happened here. Then we can make some, I think, decisions on criteria.
Thank you trustee Stoma, uh, I have trustee Sullivan.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I'm going to lower my hand, I'm duly recognized by the chair, is that correct?
That's correct, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, appreciate that. I've, um, made a couple of notes and then I have a suggestion. Uh, this is a report, not an action item, is that correct?
Is that the way it was?
That's correct. Okay, good, so then I can make a recommendation, but we not have to vote on it. So, uh, as trustee Stoma said, of course, the demographer, I think, is kind of our first move. I was going to ask for an update on that, but I'd like to go through my list first. Uh, so an update on the demographer, I, I like the phase in option, but rather than me and other trustees saying, I like this or I like that, I'd like to recommend to the chair and in the board that, that I schedule a, um, redistricting committee meeting. Uh, I don't want to say as soon as possible, but before the end of November, so that we can kind of flush out a little bit more on the, um, the criteria and make a recommendation to the board, possibly to be voted on in December for the criteria. Then with the maps potentially are available to us in January, then we will have our criteria set. Because I think, you know, while we're talking about roads and boundaries and ethnicity and population growth, some of the things are independent of those factors. For instance, do we maintain incumbency? Do we maintain voting precincts? Those are separate and we could probably decide on those as basic options, uh, criteria rather, uh, going forward. uh, criteria rather, uh, going forward in the committee meeting and then to the board in December for a potential vote if, if everyone agrees. And then go ahead and just decide early on too about using the phase in option, so that it is least disruptive to the district as, uh, the, as legal counsel has said. So those are my comments, Chair, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Um, do we, do we have an update on the demographer?
It, so it's, it's my understanding that the, uh, that the board wanted to go with, um, Templeton demographics. Um, so that was Rocky Gardner and Bob Templeton. Um, so I have let them know that you guys would like to, um, engage them. Um, and we're engaging them through, um, um, through the, uh, engagement letter and contract for services that you have with Thompson and Horton. So you'll receive one invoice with respect to redistricting and, and their, um, expenses will be, um, an expense on our, um, invoice.
I think the question to know is, so when do they start work? I mean, when? Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
So I had asked them to be prepared to present the data, um, the census data to you guys in January. Am I hearing that you want an earlier meeting to receive the change analysis in December?
That's, that was not my intention, uh, if I could jump in. Chair, may I be duly recognized?
Yes, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Um, my intention was for us to, a- as the committee and then to the board in December, to set some basic criteria, not all the criteria, but basic criteria, so that when the maps are available to us in January, we've checked off a couple of basic tenets that we can move forward to once we see data.
And in addition to the criteria, what I do think it's important, um, whether it's done at the committee level and recommendations to the board or the full board level, is to begin thinking about, uh, the trustee engagement and, uh, community engagement model that you want to use. Because once you've identified that, then we can go back to our timeline, thinking about project analysis and begin putting dates on that timeline, either specific board meeting dates, workshop dates. Um, you know, if we're going to do a survey to the public, when that survey would run, um, so that we're all on this, on, on the same page.
Okay, I think the committee could use your help and guidance there and then we'll, we'll flush it out.
I think with, to go over, um, with the recommendation of trustee Sullivan, I might, obviously I do agree with that. I don't know if, if any of my colleagues have any issues with that, to meet sometime before December to kind of hash out all that information. Um, but just, just to make sure I, that everyone knows that we have, that our next meeting is December 9th.
Right.
And we don't have a regular meeting in January.
So we don't have a regular, okay.
I mean, we can always set up one if we need to.
Yeah.
And you may have to for this, you very well may have to. I, I concur with, with trustee Sullivan and, uh, board chair. Uh, you know, if we can, we can do something between now and, uh, our December break, uh, in terms of determining criteria, I'm in. I think that's a worthwhile endeavor, I'll certainly devote time to it.
And if you want to speed the process up and if you're going to have a special meeting anyway in January, um, if you have a meeting that's solely dedicated to redistricting, you could do two things at that meeting. You could have the initial change analysis and a discussion of the law that goes with that. Um, and then if you're comfortable, some initial maps presented to you at that meeting, um, that actually address the change analysis that you could begin responding to. Um, that's not something that can be done in an hour. Um, I think to be safe, you would need to set at least three hours aside to get through both of those things comfortably, so that all trustees could have input, um, and, and could follow along.
Good suggestion.
So that, so what I'm hearing is that we're, we're going to have all the members, we're going to email you and with several dates and times. And then we just go from there for our meeting in January. Cause it seems like we're all in, you know, concurring that we're going to need a, a meeting in January. So just making sure everyone knows that.
And so then, just to summarize, if in December, um, we're, we're developing what our criteria might be and then developing an engagement model and then in, um, for a recommendation to the board to consider. And then in January, we are looking at the change analysis and initial maps. Things will be coming together nicely, because then we know what we want to do with the maps and we know how we want to engage the board and engage the community going forward from February on. Um, so that's a nice, um, running in parallel there to make sure we complete the project.
We, uh, trustee Salivar, we may need to adjust our board meeting day to, if we want Lisa to be here on a, and she can't be here on the Tuesday and Thursday, first Tuesday and Thursday of each month, is that correct?
So, uh, Thursdays would be the first and second Thursdays of each month. Uh, uh, evening, yeah, first and second Thursdays of each.
So we may be reaching out to you to move the meetings either to Tuesday or Wednesday, starting on December the 9th, actually, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
It, that, it's just conflicts that, with her previous engagement.
I don't think there's any issue with that.
Okay, so thank you, I appreciate that.
We totally work with that. Um, so I guess the consensus that we're, that I'm hearing is we just want to make sure that we're ready for the July deadline.
Correct, correct. We, we want to be done by, by June, so come July 23rd, um, which is the first day for candidates to file. We know what the map looks like.
Okay, and so based on what you're hearing, on us meeting earlier and then having that meeting in January, do you think we're going to be ready by?
I, I definitely think if we have those preliminary conversations in December about the criteria and engagement model for the public and for the trustees, and then we combine this initial meeting, um, as a demographic change analysis meeting and initial maps, I really do think that sets us up well, um, um, to have a good process and to achieve this by June.
First, ma'am. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, I like the way this is flowing, I think it's going to go well. And we, we've had one committee meeting already and with, I was looking the data, trying to look the data, but it's kind of irrelevant, so within the last 30 days, we're talking about the issue tonight. We'll hopefully have a committee meeting again, uh, in, in the end of November and then come back and have another meeting and to discuss this at the board meeting in December. That's really good progress. And then we will, we will corral the information from the demographers and combine it, couple it with our criteria and be ready to make additional steps in a, not a fast process, because we'll be thorough, but in a process that helps us meet deadlines. And that, I think, is what we're all saying and we're all kind of passively asking if that's what we want to do. I'll, I'll just recommend it, I know it's not an agenda item, but I'll just recommend that, based on comments we've heard tonight.
Yes, trustee Stoma.
I concur.
Thank you, trustee Stoma. Trustee, where are you?
Thank you, uh, yeah, I think, um, something you mentioned that we're, we're saying, um, uh, I have a question whether, because you mentioned, uh, December, we could establish a criteria, we can address some of those, you know, we can begin, so we can stay on target. But almost like you're saying that we're not going to get any maps until January. Um, I mean, we could, some of us have been tinkering, looking at the county and other redistricting, they're messy or I hope we never get that far. But, um, we can find out on our own, some, some of this information to just get a general sense. This would be, it would be completely out of the question to, to request some initial numbers, so that we get, you know, because some of that will inform, you know, what questions to ask as far as criteria and stuff. It might help us determine, I mean, you know, not just not knowing, kind of get, doesn't have, you know, you know what I'm saying now, is there some preliminary info, numbers we can get before then?
So I can ask the, uh, demographer if we can provide your, uh, preliminary, in a preliminary form, your, your census information. Um, I, I will, I will tell you that you have sister entities, um, that have to redistrict by May of 2022. Um, and so most demographers in the state of Texas, until we hit the end of December, will, will be dealing with those entities, um, because they, they, they've got to adopt their single member district maps by the end of December.
They're studying the data though, they already have the numbers.
Um, they've, they've got to pull it down for your jurisdiction, for, for your actual lines. Um, so yes, I, I, I will ask if that, if that data is, is available. And can be provided.
Any further questions?
Uh, yes.
Trustee vote.
We already, I assumed, Steve, do you know, do, do we already have the same data for 2010? When, when, when we set up the districts in the first place?
Uh, I don't.
I mean, I, I would like to look at that to be familiar with.
But I think he has that, the demog- the demographer.
The, the demographer has the ability to go back into the 2010 census, unless you guys actually have your shape files, which are your electronic files that, that say what the demography is by election precinct of all of your election precincts that make up an SMD.
Let me check on that.
Okay, if, if, if you, if, if you have that, then he doesn't have to pull it from, from the, um, 2010 census. But he has the ability to do that. He can pull your data from the 2010 census and then do, do your current lines. Um, and do you, do an analysis of that and then take your data from the 2020 census and do an analysis of that, and so we can do, do a comparison. Um, and he will do, even if you have the shape files, um, a- as a double check to make sure the numbers are accurate, he will still pull the 2010 numbers from the 20, um, from the Census Bureau to make sure everything is lining up as a second check.
Mario, while I'm here, it's either in your office or Desiree, it's in your office, if we have it. So if not, I don't know where to go.
And as, as far as the data we're talking about, can you tell me what, what categories are the, are the data presented?
So the, the data is presented to you for 2020, it will be presented to you in terms of total population and then percentages. Um, so you'll get raw numbers of total population divided by single, by single member district and then college, uh, system total. Um, and then those raw numbers in percentages, then you'll get raw numbers of persons who are a voting age population by single member district and by, um, total. Um, and then those raw numbers developed into, uh, percentages. Um, in addition for total population and voting age population, in addition to it being by single member district, it's also by, um, racial and ethnic category, typically, um, um, African American, Anglo, um, Latino, um, um, Asian and, and the other category. And then the last, um, piece of.
Down to the, to the, uh, uh, voting districts?
It won't, it, for purposes of looking at this change analysis, it won't be broken down, um, into the individual voting, uh, precinct, because the trigger, the 10% trigger, um, remember, um, that is triggered by total population. So we'll be looking at total population. And then with respect to the section two analysis, we look at voting age population as well as citizen voting age population, which is the other chart that you will be given. So not only persons who are over 18, but persons who are over 18 and are citizens, because that, that is the subgroup that is eligible to vote, um, in an election. So you'll be given that as well. But as we are looking at real time population shifts, um, in a map drawing session, and if we do it in real time, um, information regarding a census block, so sometimes we get even smaller than an election precinct, we look at a census block, um, we'll be able to tell you the number of people in that census block and the demographic breakdown of the individuals in that block, if we're moving it into or out of a particular single member district. So the chart won't show that, but as we make a particular move, that, that will be shown with respect to that move and then it will be shown in any real time demonstration.
Any further questions?
Yes, Chair Salivar, um, may I be duly recognized by the chair?
Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McBride, does this conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, I, I'd just like to thank you. Um, appreciate you coming back again and again with us and walking us through this process and being our partner as we move forward. Thank you, thank you, Chair Salivar.
My pleasure, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, this was a very, very good presentation, thank you for making it tonight.
Thank you, I look forward to working with the commu- uh, the committee later this month and seeing the full board again, um, in December. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So before we adjourn tonight, I just want to make sure that we, we have these items set. As one is, I'm hearing that we're meeting in November, the committee meeting, redistricting committee meeting and board members are meeting in November. And then we're also looking for dates for the board meeting in December. Uh, we will consider the criteria, so whenever we meet in December. And then we're meeting in January with the demographer and Lisa, is that correct?
Yes, my understanding.
Thank you so much.
And, excuse me, could, uh, could we get copies of your, uh, your slides from this presentation?
We, if you want, we have it here, so we'll just send it out to you, we have it, okay.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Perfect.
Lisa, we have the, we have your presentation if you just want us to send it to the board.
That, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
That would be wonderful. And can you make sure that the board has, and I can resend my presentation from September, I think it was September 13th and the one from December as well? I can resend those?
Yes, yes, Desiree, we need all three of those, okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you so much. Any, uh, future agenda items, colleagues? So hearing none, it is, uh, 7:29, the meeting's adjourned.
Good job, thank you for, everyone.
Thank you, Chair, bye bye.